Good morning. I now call to order the organizational meeting of the Newport News School Board for Saturday, July 1, 2023. A quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. The purpose of this meeting is to approve organizational matters as required by the Code of Virginia. I am opening this organizational meeting because the term of the school board chair expired at midnight on June 30. As customary, the superintendent opens and leads the meeting until the school board appoints a chairman. We have one member of the school board who wishes to participate in our meeting electronically. As indicated in Board Policy BEE, electronic participation in meetings from remote location, the board member must ask, must make such requests, cite the reason for remote attendance, and the board must approve the request by majority vote of the members present. School board member Marissa Alger has made such a request. Ms. Alger?
Yes.
Ms. Alger, please, Ms. Alger shares that due to a personal family matter, she is unable to attend in person and requests board approval to participate electronically. Thank you. Does she make a request? Ms. Alger?
Just share where she's...
Please share where you, where you currently are.
I'm currently in Tucson, Arizona.
Thank you. Hearing Ms. Alger's request, what is the pleasure of the board? Do I have a motion?
I move to allow Ms. Alger to participate in today's meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Buffalo, call the roll.
Hunter.
Four.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Harris.
Harris.
Searl's Law.
Four.
We will begin this morning's meeting with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors is Mrs. Scarlett Minto, Chief Financial Officer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to share with you a poem written by Catherine Pulsifer, and it's titled, "Resilience Is." Resilience is the fire that burns within, a strength that rises up when we begin to face life's struggles, both big and small, to find the courage to stand tall. Resilience is the seed of hope we sow when everything around us seems to woe, a faith that grows within our hearts and helps us navigate life's darkest part. Resilience is the story we tell of how we face our fears and learn to excel, of how we found the strength to rise and become our best selves in life's endless tries. Resilience is the strength we possess, the inner power that we express, to overcome the obstacles we face and emerge victorious with grace. So let us cherish this quality within and use it to overcome any challenge that begins, for resilience is the key to our success and the foundation of our happiness. Please join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, equal and just.
Thank you, Ms. Minto. At this time, the school board will elect a chairman for the 2023-2024 school year. Are there any nominations?
Madam Chair, I nominate Ms. Lisa Searl's Law. Excuse me, madam. Intro superintendent. I nominate Ms. Lisa Searl's Law for chair.
Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of chairman are closed. May I have a motion to close the nominations for the office of the chairman?
Do we need a second?
Do we need a second?
No. No, okay. Motion to...
No, no second is needed.
We need a motion for do what now?
A motion...
I'll move to close.
To close the nomination.
I second it.
Ms. Buffalo, please call the roll.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations.
Lisa Searl's Law has been nominated to serve as the school board chair. Is there, um, is there any discussion regarding the nominations?
Dr. Mitchell, that was to close the nominations.
Correct.
Now we can actually vote all the chairs.
Okay. Oh, I, I'm with you. I apologize. Lisa Searl's Law has been selected as the school board chairman. Congratulations. And now I turn this over.
Actually, now, now, yeah, now, yeah, there vote. Is there any, any discussion? Well, I have something else to say.
That's what I was reading before. Okay.
Um, it has been my honor to serve you all this past year. I feel like Ms. Minto's poem was just spot on. I have seen this board be resilient, focused on the tasks in front of us, making decisions that have been hard, and putting our students and our teachers and staff first. And it has been a joy to be able to, to lead that work. And if you were to have me again, I intend to serve in the capacity that allows us to continue those efforts.
So.
So now I'm going to call the roll to vote on the nomination of Ms. Searl's Law to become chair. All minds clear?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
One down.
Okay. Thank you all for your support. I look forward to serving you. And at this time, the school board will elect a vice chair for the 2023-24 school year. Are there any nominations?
Yes, there is. I would like to nominate Dr. Terry Best as co-chair.
Are there other nominations? Hearing no further nominations, nominations for the office of vice chair are closed. May I have a motion to close the nominations for the office of vice chair?
Madam Chair, I move to close the nominations for the office of vice chair.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
This roll call is to close the nominations. Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. Now we will have the roll call for vice chair. Terry Best, all minds clear?
Yes.
Hunter.
Four.
Alger.
Four.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero. Congratulations.
Congratulations. We will now move on to Section 2, the Consent Agenda, which includes 2.01, Appointment of the Clerk and Deputy Clerks of the School Board, 2.02, Appointment of the Agents and Deputy Agents of the School Board, 2.03, Appointment of Person to Serve in the Absence of the Superintendent, 2.04, Reimbursement Resolution for Use of Virginia Public School Authority Funding for Technology Purchases, 2.05, Impact Aid Authorization, 2.06, 2023-24 Out-of-Division Student Tuition at $6,165, 2.07, 2023-24 Tuition Rate for Non-Virginia Resident Students at $11,650, 2.08, Proposed 2023-24 School Board Meeting Calendar, 2.09, Declaration of Covenants for Inspection and Maintenance of Storm Water Management Facilities, 2.10, Reviewed Policies. At this time, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair. On item 2.08, the board has option A and option B in terms of our organizational calendar. So I would, because that's a decision that we need to, need to make, I would say that that should probably exclude it from the consent agenda at this time, that we should take that up as an action item.
Um, okay. We can pull it out if we, if others agree. I think we did come to a consensus, though, on that.
And so, you know, in that, in that regard, if we're voting on it now, I would, I would like to hear from my fellow board members, their choice for their option and what their rationale is, why they're choosing option A or option B.
Okay, that's a fair question. Absolutely. Uh, who'd like to go first?
I'll go first.
Okay. Thanks, Terry.
Um, I'm choosing now option A. Initially, I was in support of B, but I think it makes more sense for me to support option A, and I think that's in the best interest of how we do business for the board, that will give, we won't have to change offices in the middle of the school year. I think that, for me, I was in opposition to actually moving elections, city council and school board elections, too, from May to November, and I think that putting our elections to accommodate that more politicizes that, the offices that we have here in the City of Newport News. So for me, it's, it's option A.
Other comments?
I guess I will ask the question, there is still any board members who feel strongly about option B, and if they wanted to share what their, what their feelings are about option B?
Um, I'll go next. Um, I believe, my thought, I think I'm one of the folks, I'm in favor of option B, in particular that, you know, elections are what they are. You know, we can't assume that those, you know, that have office, we would have to come back and do an election anyway, hypothetically. This covers, you know, I'm, I'm willing to even modify, I mean, I'm not sure what the Virginia law says about how long the terms have to be, a year. But somewhere in July, and somewhere in January, we're going to have to come back. I mean, we didn't have to do it this year, but years down the road, we will have to have elections in July if those individuals are currently in office or not reelected. Right? Um, that, that's going to be, that's going to be inevitable. And so we can cover that span right now.
Okay. Other comments?
If I'm reading them right, the option B is the one that would have the organizational meeting in January, and option A is the one that would keep the organizational meeting in, in July. Similar to what Dr. Best said, for me, option A, where we keep our organizational meeting in July, makes sense from the school year cycle. You know, summertime, not quite as intense, we're setting our meetings, our plans, our committee structures and, and plans for the upcoming school year. They're similar to Dr. Best, I wasn't a fan of moving the elections in November, we are where we are. But it, for school divisions, makes a whole lot of sense to have your new board coming on more at the end of a school year, beginning of the next, the next one. So I think just operationally, it makes sense. Might we have to, should someone be, you know, chair or vice chair and not be reelected, revisit that? Sure. We could possibly have to revisit it if, you know, someone had been a chair and had run for a different office in November and had to give up, and/or had an unfortunate health situation or an accident. So I just think for the flow of, you know, the life cycle of the school year, A makes more sense. So that's my preference. I think we'll be okay with whichever we choose, but.
All right. So Madam Chair, if there's, oh, go ahead.
I did, I did have one more comment, because it brought something to mind. I'm just thinking about when I first came on the school board, my very first meeting was an organizational meeting. And as a new school board, you're trying to get to know your fellow school board members and your people that already have in mind, they'd like to be chair or vice chair, so they're kind of campaigning in, in your ear. And it was, it was, it was, I signed up for it, and I was elected, so I was up for the challenge, but it was, it was a little overwhelming. And I remember just even walking through this door right here, somebody was in my ear saying, well, are you going to vote? Are you going to nominate? So it was very intense. Had the election been in January, that would have given me the opportunity to actually work with these people and know them a little better. So that, for that reason as well. I think for me, having sat in the chair role, and I know that we have others up here who have done so, I can't imagine us electing a new chair at budget season while we're trying to approve the budget. And so, and that's just one instance, I guess. So I, my feeling is we're elected to serve the division, and the best way to serve the division is with continuity. If it means we have to have an extra meeting because someone was not reelected, we have special meetings all the time. So that would be why I think I would support it, just because I think it would support the superintendent without, without wavering during a very tough time of the year.
And so, Madam Chair, I was, I, I was and am in favor of option A, but wanted to hear what the argument for, for option B. I'm in favor of option A for a lot of the reasons that have been stated, which is that we are a school division, and planning for the school year is best done, I believe, during the summer. And this is a, this organizational meeting is a planning event, we're setting our, we're ending our previous school year officially as of, as of this meeting and beginning the next one. And I think it's important to do that during the summer as we're deciding on both.
You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Too long.
I think as, as we're deciding on both personnel from the board leadership perspective and as well personnel who are coming to the division from the superintendent's perspective, that this is a personnel type of a month for us oftentimes. So hearing what, hearing the discussion here, I'm going to make a motion to amend the, the main motion on the consent agenda, that we would adopt items 2.01 through 2.10 with option A as the, as the selected option for the consent agenda.
Okay. And so if the record... You are unmuted. And so if the minutes could include what option A is, that would be acceptable? All right, do we have?
A second, then.
A second? Okay. I'm letting...
Madam Chair?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if Mrs. Alger had something to say or not.
Mrs. Alger, do you, did you want to comment?
Uh, yes, thank you. I, and I apologize for the delay. Um, the voices are coming in and out. So just real quick, I, I agree with option A for reasons of that I believe that if you're going based on the calendar of the school system, the best time actually is really towards, towards the end of the school year to start planning for the beginning of the school year, even before that. But to start mid-year is actually stressful for the school system, I think would be stressful for the school system as well as for, you know, our board possibly, because you're, you're shifting and you've got to shift quickly. Where with the summer, you can build up, you'll have the opportunities to build those relationships, and then start that, that planning, you know, especially for the new school year.
Thank you. Okay, so we had a motion which included amending our, amending for the option A, and we're going to include the language of option A in the minutes, and we had a second. And I think we've had enough discussion, but I'll give you the opportunity for some more. Okay. Madam?
It's amazing, I do have, I do have, it's amazing that all the other school districts in the area have moved to option B, right? And this is profound to me that we would kind of be alone in this, this particular option. Um, you know, school district, the school system starts in July, but we are bored, right? I just thinks, I'm not, I'm just, it's kind of puzzles me that, you know, when you have elections that, and any other elections at any other place, when the new person comes in, there's typically new officers. It'd be the governor, or, you know, the universities, Economic Development Board. You know, when you have elections and have new people, you typically have replacements of new officers. I'm on a lot of boards. And this is the first time I've ever seen this at all. I've got a lot of knowledge here, like I have 40 years of knowledge and probably 30 years on boards. I've not seen this before. Not. Not, you know, we're bored, we're going to work anyway together. Either be six months, you know, that plan shouldn't change because we got new board members. Shouldn't, the plan shouldn't change because we got new board members. We set the policy, and we set, you know, what we're going to do, lay it out. That policy stills going to be enacted, you know, with the members here, those majority on the board, it shouldn't really change that often. We, we are going to be an outline, you know, I mean, this is a whole community, I mean, it's, we're going to be out, me and out. I'm just, you know, that's just my, I, I don't see the rationale. I mean, we can't stop, you know, we're non-political, you know, we can't stop when the elections are now. You know, I, I think they are, you know, more political in nature, because when we elected, we, we had no control of that. But we do have control of, you know, getting it right. Getting it right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yes.
Madam Chair, I'll just put my two cents in again. Um, you know, part of my comfort level with option A is I have served on various, various boards. A lot of times nonprofits will have a fiscal year, say July 1 to June 30. And many times their cycles are that way. I've been on boards where they'll appoint the chair, you know, the officers in June, and install the new board members all to start July 1, but in that case, those new board members have no say in who the officers are, but it works for them, it works for them on a, especially some of your nonprofits that are more educationally focused, it works very well, a similar, similar cycle. I've been on boards where theirs, their cycle is February. So I think whatever works well, works well. We're, I understand that other divisions in the area are, are doing it differently. I do think school divisions are unique in that we are electing now in November, but the cycle of the school year is different than a city cycle. So for me, it just, I think it will flow better for the division to track the academic year. That's just my...
I am thankful that the Virginia School Board Association does offer training both for boards that have elections in July and in January. So to me, there's a support, at least from the state level, of the different types of governance cycles or election cycles. So that, you know, that's promising as well, that we'll have the support no matter what we choose. Because that's, I guess that's my...
Can I ask a question? If, let's say, we go with a particular option, can that option be changed down the road if, if we're looking at, let's say, and taking Gary's consideration, looking at how the other boards have functioned versus the, the boards that have chosen otherwise, is it, is it possible to change things down the road based on, you know, I guess, updated knowledge?
Yes.
School working changes, possibly.
Okay. So we will agree that if it's not working, we won't struggle with that, we'll just say, hey, it's not working, and we will add it to the agenda. Does that sound good? All right. Well, we'll call the roll.
Okay, so right here is the board's amendment of the consent agenda to approve option A of the school board meeting calendar. The motion was made by Mr. Brown and seconded by Dr. Best. Okay. Mr. Hunter?
Against.
Four.
Amen. Four. Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Against.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries five two.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next item on our agenda?
Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Now you're moving on to action consent agenda.
Oh, I apologize, I apologize.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so now we're going to actually vote on the consent agenda as amended. Okay.
Correct.
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Amen.
Four.
Best.
Four.
Brown.
Four.
Harris.
Four.
Searl's Law.
Four.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you for catching that. It's early in the morning on a Saturday. So the next item on our agenda is Section 3, Action Items. We do have item 3.01, the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, and the board has decided to table that at this time. So we will move on to Section 3.02, 2023-24 Student Fees. Dr. Mitchell, do you have any updates for us?
I do not have any updates. Ms. Joanne Jones is available via Zoom in the event that you have any additional questions based on her presentation last, at the last board meeting.
Okay. All right. Do I have any questions? Do we have a motion to adopt?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the student fees for the 2022-2023 school year.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
A little question.
I just have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I have a question. I, this is because it, one of my notes on the Rights and Responsibilities, I see the technology fees in our propos, in our slideshow from last time for lost or stolen device and damage beyond repair was up to 125, but then I, we also have in the new Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, there's some different levels of fees. So I don't know if we need to modify these so it's up to 125, or if we need to modify, I'm not sure what we're voting on as far as technology fees.
Okay.
Both in the technology, and I don't know.
I'm trying to hear you, you're breaking up just a little bit.
That's it, sorry.
But if there's a, if there's a discrepancy between the instructional fees and the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, we can definitely make the change in the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Okay, yes.
Didn't really figure it out.
Yeah, the, so the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, in one place, it has the lost, stolen, damaged beyond repair fees as up to 125, but then in the back, which is the Technology Device Agreement, those have offenses for second, third, so they start at 125 and go up to 480. So I'm just not sure which, because there's two different schedules kind of in the Rights and Responsibilities, what are they going to be?
Dr. Ransom, are you still on the call? So the fees in the technology section of the book are the updated fees, and I think we just need to align page twenty-six in the bottom portion as far as technology with what is in the back that was submitted from the technology team.
Okay, so should we then amend our instructional fees we're adopting now from the up to one twenty-five to the three offense schedule?
Yes.
And so we are voting to, the superintendent's recommending that we charge fees up to four hundred and eighty dollars on lost or stolen devices. That's the recommend, that's the recommendation.
That is the recommendation.
Okay. And I'd like to note that, just for everyone's listening, in the schedule of fees, there is a global provision that if a family is having difficulty, they can reach out to the division to make arrangements.
I need to amend my motion. I said the wrong school year. It should be the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. And I just, that was wrong.
That's all, I'm good. Okay. So is there further discussion? Okay. So do we have a motion? I'm going to go back and let you redo your, your motion for it.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty, I move to approve the student fees for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Great, thank you. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any further conversation? Please call the roll.
I'll just, you know.
Oh, go ahead.
I'll repeat my one comment that I made at the last board meeting, which is just that in terms of future fees and as we look at our fee schedule, essentially the more that you charge everyone upfront, then the less punitive these types of fees can be. And we're, we're looking at like, hey, four hundred and eighty dollars is a, is a big price tag, but if everyone had some skin in the game in terms of paying for their technology upfront, then that price would come down significantly for, for everyone and increases more accountability by all of the students and their families of the equipment and devices that we issue. So that's just my general comment.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, please call the roll.
I have a question.
Okay.
Some amendment to the rights and responsibilities, a recommendation from the superintendent about some fees, so are we, are we going with Dr. Best's, a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four instructional fees with nothing, I've heard something about.
It, that we need to amend the, make sure that the, that that line item for technology reads correctly.
Should be the.
Up to the.
The last page.
Page twenty-six, is it?
Well, we're.
No, it's the last page that needs to be.
Right, so we're not voting on rights and responsibilities, but what we are saying is the student fees for lost, stolen, or damaged beyond repair devices, what we're voting on are the three fees based on first, second, third offense as they stand at the back of the rights and responsibilities handbook.
I'm, I'm going to be honest with you all, I'm not sure about what's in the back of the rights and responsibilities handbook as it conflicts with the instructional fees. The up to twenty-five, well, hundred and twenty-five dollars is what I was cleared with, so I'm not sure about the four hundred and eighty dollars, so if there's been some additional conversations about the up to four hundred dollars and eighty dollars, I can't speak to that.
Yes, Dr. Jones, there have been, and so my recommendation is that we align the student fees with what is in the rights and responsibilities handbook in terms of technology.
Okay.
All right, so what I'm hearing is you all are tabling the rights and responsibilities handbook, so what I'm hearing on the table now is just to approve the, the student fees for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year, which is, which appears on Word Doc's.
Okay.
Because your table are in R. Right?
Well, I was, I was saying that if, if we are, if that's our approval, then the superintendent is limited to a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Right.
And that's the discussion here is that the superintendent has changed her recommendation to up to four hundred and eighty dollars.
Correct.
For the lost and damaged technology.
So should I, I can make a motion to change these fees?
Yeah. Can I add something? So if we're tabling the, the rights and responsibilities handbook.
That's what I was getting ready to do. Yes. That's actually what I was getting ready. I, I just wanted to make sure you had an opportunity to chime in. So we are going to go ahead and also table this agenda item, section three point oh two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four student fees, and we will make sure that it gets the language and if there's a gradient, we'll make sure that that's articulated as we actually do the approval along with the, the students' rights and responsibilities handbook. Okay. So then the next item on our agenda is three point oh three. We had some new and revised policies. Dr. Mitchell, any comments or updates?
Just to say that Tracy Brooks, Brooks presented to you the new and revised policies in our previous meeting and we don't have any other updates to provide.
Okay.
But Tracy Brooks is available in the event you have any questions.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the new and revised policies?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the new revised policies as presented.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I just want to preliminarily thank the board for the time behind the scenes working on these policies. There was a lot of revision, there were opportunities where we just had, you know, very good discord over how the, the division is run and how we meet the needs of the division through our policies. So I, I just really appreciate you all for taking that so seriously. I know that's our job and that's what we're supposed to do, but it's one thing to do it with a joyful heart and it's another thing to do it as checking a box. And also, I need to thank our policy team because without them, we would get very confused as to what we, what point or what draft or what version we were working with. So Brooks, I want to thank you very much for that. So is there other discussion regarding these policies? All right. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Ayman?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Sorrells Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Great, thank you. We will now move on to section four, reports and information. Four point zero one is the annual notice regarding the availability of school board policies and procedural man, manual. So this announcement will serve as the required annual public notice that copies of the school board policies and procedures manual are available to the public and employees in the library of each school, in each Newport News Public Library, and online on the policies and procedures website at www.nnschools.org/policies and on the Newport News Public Schools So next on our agenda is four point zero two, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Mitchell.
Good morning. I will keep my comments brief. I just would like to congratulate all the retirees. We had the opportunity to enjoy a dinner and recognize those who retired from Newport News Public Schools this past Thursday. Congratulations to each one of you and thank you for your commitment and hard work to our students, and I'd like to say have a great summer. Thank you.
Thank you. So as advertised, citizens may submit comments via email or voicemail up to thirty minutes prior to our meeting time to be included in the official meeting record. For those of you joining us in person, the board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your concerns and get back with you at a later time. Do we have any cards? Okay. Thank you. And, um, let's see. Hold on one second. Where is that? I don't know, let me ask. I did, okay, great. Okay, I'm going to allow my board members to have a moment to just, if you have any comments, I know we did close out our school year, but do you have any comments moving forward?
May I make a comment?
Yes, absolutely.
Dr. Mitchell, did you have any promotions or anything to bring to the board as far appointments?
We have three individuals that we had some conversation. At this time, I would like to share that Ms. White.
Well, let's, let's put a motion on the floor. Mrs. Sorrells Law for personnel.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to approve personnel actions?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
You want, go ahead and, you can actually read what the motion is.
Yes. Yeah, because it wasn't all with us.
So Madam Chair, I move to approve the superintendent's personnel recommendations for Dr. Kip Rogers for Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Katie Smith for Assistant Principal of Instruction at Minchville High School, and Dr. Nicole Arrington for Principal of Marshall Early Learning Center.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Chair, those flip flops. Dr. Arrington, I think was going to be Minchville and.
Dr. Arrington is Minchville, Dr. Katie Smith is Marshall.
Yep, they are flip flopped, yep.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not your fault, yep.
Okay, so I amend the motion, Dr. Katie Smith for Marshall Early Learning Center and Dr. Nicole Arrington for Assistant Principal of Instruction at Minchville High School.
Correct.
Second.
Okay. Now, conversation and share. Okay.
Hunter?
Four.
Alger?
Four.
Ayman?
Four.
Best?
Four.
Brown?
Four.
Harris?
Four.
Sorrells Law?
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Great, great, can we end?
And we, we will ask those three individuals to be present in the August meeting. All three individuals have spent time in Newport News Public Schools as teachers and as administrators, and we are certainly happy to have them promoted and to have one return.
Great, thank you. That's exciting. Now I will hear comments from the board if you choose to share. All right.
No one else, I, I do have.
Oh, you do have comments.
Yes, I would just like to thank my fellow board members for re-electing me as vice chair. It's been a pleasure to serve you and I really enjoy working with our chair, Ms. Lisa Sorrells Law and all of the staff, and I'm just most appreciative and just want to say thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll make one com, quick comment, happy Fourth of July, everyone out there, and hope you have a wonderful day cooking out today as you get ready. And Madam Clerk, appreciate your work and very happy that we were able to retain your services and our vote today. So congratulations.
Yes.
To you and, you know, on, on behalf of myself and I think other board members, we really sincerely thank you and all the work that you do to keep us together and organized. So it doesn't, I don't think it goes without saying, so I really appreciate all the work that you put into this board, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely, ditto. Any other comments? Okay.
I want to make a.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to both the chair and, and vice chair for your hard work and for the whole team, really, really working through a tough year and, and I think it's been amazing to see the work behind the scenes and how everyone has the best interest of children and, and of course, of the school division, and I'm, I'm really proud of that work. And I, you know, I want to thank everyone and thank really the community for assisting us and supporting, you know, the, the hard work in order to overcome all that, that's happened this year.
Thank you. And I'll just wrap up and say that I feel like, yes, this year has been a tough year. We've gotten through a lot together. I think that's made us stronger as a board. What I noticed though was the, the support that we had. We had the support from the school division itself, those of us who are here working. We had it from the community, we had it from our city council. In fact, I went and spoke at the last council meeting and let them know how they'd been part of our success story for this year. So I'm excited as we move forward with our team intact and with our marching orders ready to go. I know we all need a little bit of rest and recuperation, but we do have work, so I will be calling you. But this division is very special and I'm glad we've got a group of special people leading it. Meeting adjourned.